Aljo, did you get your stuff?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So, okay. This at least is the solid waste resolution that is listed. And if you find two letters this day, I thought I grabbed those, but I'm not finding them now. Pull up Jerry's letter, so just disregard them.
Did she give us the new application?
No.
And I'm just gonna say, I was in the office for three days by myself, and it was hectic, so there may be lots of errors in the minutes.
Have you started looking for a part time or?
No. Now, I'm holding out, though, if I can give my resource.
Are you waiting to see if we'll get hired?
Yeah. Is that even to be not doing that? Hannah just had to have emergency services.
Uh-oh.
Yes.
Did we need to do Jerry's letter today, or?
Yes, and I look at it, it's already typed, I just have to update it. If I meant to do them yesterday, but I found here, but I don't know. So I really should look at my engine, but if you have one of your. Okay, I just have two corrections. There may be a few grammatical things in there, but nothing major.
Under Highway Department, I would like it added under where it says that I discussed. It says that Commissioner Flue discussed gravel rates in 2019 and concerns with pictures on work performed at OS 65. So I'd like concerns with pictures added.
Pictures on work or on work?
Sure, of is fine, of or on, and then performed on or at OS 65. That's one, and the other one, under the nursing home, about four lines down, it says, Wallace related that the board would need to establish a board to operate. I would say Wallace related that the commission, because the board and board kind of makes it confusing, but the commission would need to establish a board to operate the nursing home. And then I would just say, and asked, take out the board, asked to consider appointing the nonprofit organization, because he didn't say appoint some of the members, he just said to use, he actually said to use that nonprofit board.
I would object.
That's exactly what you said. If you'd like to pull up the video, we can.
Do you have anything else?
No, those were the only two things I wanted clarification on.
So what was your fixing in that sentence?
I would just take, you have the board a couple different times, and it doesn't decipher between. I would put the first one as Wallace related that the commission needs to establish a board, because that would be a separate board from the commission, to operate the nursing home, and asked to consider appointing the nonprofit organization that approached the county to run the nursing home, so that they could get established, determine wages, and negotiate management agreement.
And is that agreeable to the majority?
I believe that is true.
Okay, so Wallace related that the commission would need to establish a board to operate the nursing home and asked.
To consider.
Asked to consider to strike.
Yeah, I just think with three different boards in there, it's.
And then I'm taking out the word some of.
Some of the members of, you can just skip right to the.
So it would read, Wallace related that the commission would need to establish a board to operate the nursing home and asked to consider appointing the person, the nonprofit organization that approached.
Well, just the nonprofit organization.
I don't think I said a point, I said using the board. Using some of the members, using the members of the board.
So I'm striking, you know, appointing as we need to.
The board has changed, I think we need to give an air. I guess I could help the commission to make about that, to establish that.
I believe you said something.
So they can get toward on wages and how to. Because I have thought about this, I've talked about it, I have a lot of information. I think tying this last season, I think that the nonprofit foundation that has done a lot of work in this area. They do have a hospital board member on, I think it won't be any problem for them to add a commission to that. And I guess I would think mine want to start with that board, knowing that it eventually may change, and that we may ask for representation for various parts of the county. But I think they're probably more aware right now of what is.
You asked to start with the nonprofit and add a commissioner to it.
I think as we consider formally establishing them as probably.
I think my idea is to start with that board. My feeling is, we may end up with two boards eventually, but I think we need to have someone start formalizing some plan when, if, and when this change of ownership takes place.
Right, I think the commission, that's the commission's obligation. But you, what you just said in the meeting is that you wanted to appoint the nonprofit organization and add a commissioner to it as, as the acting board. You didn't use the word acting, but you just said add the board. I move to approve the minutes of September 17th, 2018 as corrected.
I don't think I still have all the corrections.
That's okay. Striking the board twice.
Okay, so I got Wallace related that the commission would need to establish a board to operate the nursing home and asked to consider appointing members of the nonprofit organization that approached the county to run the nursing home.
Well, actually, what he said was, he asked to consider adding a commission to the nonprofit organization, and using them as the, as the administrative board. That's what it said in the video just now, if anyone wants to hear it.
So, help me with what the minutes need to say.
I think you were right, watch you get it read.
So is your motion still standing?
And asked to consider appointing the nonprofit organization that approached the county. If you'd like to add, adding a commissioner to it, that's what, that's exactly what I just played on the audio from last week's video. I want it to be correct. I want it to reflect exactly what the video said.
I think the video says that, it also said that I would see that it was going to change.
You can add that, you can add that, which may change at a later date, that's fine.
Okay, tell me where you want me to change it, and what you want me to change it to.
To consider appointing the nonprofit organization that approached the county to run the nursing home. And all the rest of that sentence is fine. If Mr. Wallace would like to add, you can, you can make a new sentence. He added that this board may change at a later date. That is accurate.
I think I also need to state in there that I said a commissioner needs to be on that board.
He did.
Okay, I'm gonna put it in red. I'm gonna add a new sentence that said, Commissioner Wallace related that board member needed to serve on the board.
Commission, make sure you say commission, instead of board and board.
Member. And that the board, they have. Member is going to change. After.
At a later date, he didn't say when, he just said in the future is what he actually said.
Okay, so I have it in red, after the management member in that period. Commissioner Wallace related that the commission member needed to serve on the board and that the board members might change at a later date. And then period that it begins debate amongst the board members concerned.
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody happy with that?
All second. All of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, round to right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I have a deal here for you guys. You know, everything is valued as what it is the first of January. Unless, say, your house broke the second of January, you still paid for the whole year, which that did happen. Here, a couple years ago, the legislatures changed that, where if it was a natural disaster, or fire, or tornado, or anything like that, and your house was destroyed, or partly destroyed, you could get a relief. I have an application here that you guys need to go through and sign for the Phelps House that broke on the 7th of January. All the application, the form is information, and then at the end is a form that you guys need to fill out and sign for approval on it. And then I have put in a dollar amount that would be abated for the house for being there just seven days in the, in the year.
Where does this go?
Where does this go, then it comes back to me.
Oh, so you're just saying you already approved it, you're asking for us to just sign it?
No, I didn't approve it, because I can't, it's gotta be a commissioner's approval deal.
But you're bringing it to us, saying it's legitimate?
Right, I bring all the paperwork to you guys, that they had, they had to submit pictures and a bunch of stuff, and then the form that goes with it, that you guys have to to sign off on it and finish out on it and stuff, so. That I will give to you guys, and you can do that whenever you get it, get it done, and we'll get the adjustment made on it.
Let me look at the form real quick and make sure we're not going to need to pull it up.
That's the second page of it.
Without form, is that going to the state or it just stays local?
Do we have a written announcement, do we have a deed of ownership?
Pardon me, all the information, all the. All, there's their information. Everything they had, supplied, the form, the insurance estimate appeal, the deed, pictures, everything's all.
There's the one, the deed, the pictures, okay.
Yeah, yeah, everything's there.
That was my question.
Yeah. So, you know, you guys can look over it and, and then, you know, do what you need to do with it, and I mean, I don't need to have it approved right now, but just.
Well, if you're not gonna really look. I have another question. For the pictures that it's.
So it's called disaster relief, and what you're saying is, was it a total loss?
Yeah, they get to buy the.
Yeah, so then, so then the abatement is permanent?
The abatement, yeah, right, the, the abatement for this year will be the amount. I mean, how you figure it is you figure how, the value and divide it by the number of years, days in the year, and then how many days they had it. Yeah, so since this was the 7th of January, you know, they don't owe much on it and stuff.
Okay, I move to approve disaster relief application for Christopher Phelps.
Second.
Just give me one second, is there a dollar amount? Do I need to, Dawn, do I need to say the dollar amount, or?
We don't have.
Approve the application, okay.
All of them favor say aye.
Aye. Terry.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yeah. Dawn, the only duplicate I see in here is the fire sprinkler. Of. But there are different, there are three different statements, two say 350, and then the one has like a 900 and something, because it adds on a $600 annual fee. So I don't know if that's just because we kept getting them later on in the year, and then they had added on their yearly fee by then, but.
I agree.
That and the pumping of the grease trap that, I guess it's dated for July. But there, it's not a duplicate. Pump grease trap from July 27th, $500 to Ready Industries.
There's a. Another one, there's two of them, but it's only one time, there's two.
Still the same service date, is that?
Yeah. Same date, everything. You guys, I'm gonna go ahead with you guys in front here while he's going through those.
Yeah, hold on. We just wanted to let you know that we referenced the discussion we had last week on storage. We're just gonna continue using that building for here, we need to do some documents over there, so.
The one out back here?
Yeah, just keep the heads up on that.
You have paper, is that what you mean? You have paper documents stored in the little.
Seventies, eighties, nineties, two thousands.
Are you required to keep all of that forever?
I need to see what it is, I still get requests several a month from the FBI, they want officer reports on people. So, I need to find out requirements, I'm not, definitely can't stay. I checked with the county attorney's office, they were suggesting.
Do we keep that hot and cold? I, I know some of the answers that, but.
Is there a way of scanning all those papers into?
We don't have the capabilities on. Anything from 2009 is on our.
Automated system?
Yeah, but everything prior to 2009, October 2009 is not, so. I don't think they can scan all, I could be. I need to take years, I need to get them, I don't know how long to get stayed, because I guess if they're gone, they're gone, so.
Okay, well. We're not.
Is, is that building, I haven't looked in there, is it, a lot of it is your stuff, the space that's taken up?
There's two sides, yeah, we have one side, one side. It has shelving units, but the one back room gets floor ceiling.
And then the rest of it is like maintenance stuff, salted and?
The other side, maintenance side, yeah. We talked about once, maybe a Conex, one of those empty semi-trailers, never put it, has a monitor, so you can break in offside.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the historical people let us put a Conex up there. Maybe we could brick it, get some old, maybe we could get some old brick and put around it or something. Or some limestone.
Well, I think we're still trying to work out the logistics, but we have kind of decided that we have the necessary room right now to do what we need to do temporarily anyhow, so.
Is that what we need to figure out for David's?
I know, and that's what I thought, I thought we were maybe going to ask to consolidate the extension office down here. I mean, I thought that was one of the solutions, if we weren't gonna be using that outbuilding.
It's a decision, you guys just need to make a decision, yes.
Is that what we're talking about down here, under your?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want you guys to make a decision, because we can't, I feel like we're, we're stuck.
Yeah, and it's almost the end of the month, and we had requested by the, had been requested by the treasurer to get moving by November, or October. So we'll leave your papers, leave the.
We're gonna, if, if we do something with that building, it's gonna be down the road.
Somebody had suggested maybe we consider approaching a church that's at a corner from us to maybe try to purchase it, but Mike has been in it, set up.
I, you know, I, I have. I don't like the idea of using it for storage, because it's a wood structure, and it'll go up like a roman candle, if it ever catches fire, and everything's gone.
Is there any room on the lot for the EMS building to the west side? Or does the property line go right behind the building?
Right behind.
Three or four feet, I think is it. I think if we're gonna do a separate building for storage, it needs to be constructed of something beside the wood.
Well, then somebody said maybe we could build something on our property right out back here for a little bit cheaper than what we.
It would have to be, you know, you'd have to go through the historical people, get it approved, but. I don't know.
Could you go up, on top of that little brick building? Well, I think we could.
I'm sure that, you know, the structure of that building, it was not designed to have a second floor to it, so you would probably have to clear the foundation to ever beef it up enough to.
Our documents require three years, our warrant trees, those sort of things, so. If the case files are different, but it is. We deal with a lot of storage, it's.
Certain amount of years, you can go back, yeah. But still, what you're saying is, you don't really have storage in your facility, so you're still gonna need.
My new facility, I'll, I'll make sure there's.
I was gonna say, I, I could probably assassinate myself.
Let's don't go there today.
That's really what we ought to be looking to.
Let's wait till after January to start that project, okay?
We could use their building as storage.
I'm not disagreeing with you on that.
Two years, three months.
What's that?
Two years, three months, thank you for that.
The need is, the need is there, without a doubt, the need has been there for years and years and years.
I don't know if you wanna have an alluring type facility where you get people that are a little too comfortable staying there.
I don't think we need to build it comfy.
Well, what about adding on to what's there?
I, that'd be kinda hard to do to add on, that building was built in 1930, it was just.
The prob, yeah, the problem is that there is nothing in that building that's to today's standards that ever passed, so it's grandfathered in to certain extent.
And you can go look at the con porch, and you can see where it's slowly separating from the main building.
I'm sure in its day, it was a fine facility, it was probably the best in the state of Kansas for a couple of days or something. If you quit resting people, you'd have quite as much need for space.
I don't think that's their thing, you know, probably.
It seems to get worse.
Especially the most of them are off loans.
Has that transitioned? Because I remember talking last year, a lot of who we were housing was a temporary basis from I-70. So this year, is that different? It seems to be maybe the discussion.
We have that near the traffic from I-70, we have the list. The most stale, but all the rests. It's a eighty or ninety percent. We had one up and out, brought in this weekend on board, but he'll be out here, probably. The extra guy will stay.
Is there like a reason for that trend that you can pinpoint, or?
Maybe they're working other counties.
Maybe they're sneaking through our county, our big eight miles down there, they're sneaking through it.
Seven point five miles.
Yeah. Whoever the engineer was that jogged that road north. He should have gone on past that county line and then jogged it. Made a lot of trips down there in the middle of the night to accidents, I can tell you that, it's a long trip.
Don, would you like us to ask, um, Alisa to come at 9:15 then, or during that sec, section of the meeting?
Well, number one, I'm not sure she's here, and number two, I don't know if you guys are ready for that. I mean, like, you guys are still waiting to make a decision, just to.
Have you already started moving your stuff? Um, or the treasurer's office yet?
The commissioner, old commissioner's office is empty. And Lea has just brought bids down for me to present to you, her, the ledger, because she would like to get bigger on that. Because once I turn over the tax records, her, and she's done until January or February.
Is she coming down, or do you have a bid, or?
She gave me the bids, so. Okay, I feel like I'm losing my mind. And I'm probably going to save this, and then, um, I'll lay my hands on it. But did I give you guys the management's letter for the audit?
Said you.
Did I just bring it? Okay, I thought I still had it over here. So I guess if you're ready for me, then I, we can start.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
And then I can go and check and see if Alisa is there. I just wasn't really sure about this emergency, you guys wanted to go in or not.
I don't know what else we can do temporarily, is what I'm thinking, and.
If we don't, if we don't do storage, she could probably come down into the computer room, but if you come in and look to the computer room, just what we took out of the closet, it's pretty full. In fact, I don't think I'm gonna get the other two carts downstairs.
I don't, I think we could look at consolidating some space there.
There isn't any office space downtown at all, is there, a small one?
Not that I know of. Um, I know Craig and Mary Anstors have fixed up the one building that they are considering renting, but I don't know what the other brands are.
I just feel like the extension doesn't pay rent to us. Do they pay a portion of their utility bills?
They pay for their telephone rates.
Just the telephone. They don't pay anything toward utilities? So no electric usage, water usage or anything, and they have three people in our building? And then we have economic development that doesn't pay any rent, and they use our facility. Do they pay toward their utilities?
They only pay their telephone.
They pay their telephone, okay, so we're covering utilities. I feel like it's unnecessary for us to put one of our interdepartmental offices offsite and pay additional money to rent a space when we have spaces being rented from us that are unpaid for. And I'm, not that I mind them being here, but I think they're just going to have to work with us to consolidate some space, because I don't see why we should burden the taxpayers with paying for renting an additional office space when we're not getting money from the people who are using the facility that aren't under our jurisdiction, basically.
You read that, sent an email to that?
Oh, yes, yeah, I did read the email. Do you wanna take hold of this now?
Whenever you guys are, are ready.
This is from Lindberg Vogel Pierce Ferris, the auditing firm. Financial statement, we have fulfilled our responsibilities as set out in the terms of the audit engagement letter dated October 2nd, 2017. Financial statement referred to above is thoroughly presented in conformity with the regulatory basis of accounting, as described above, and includes all properly classified funds of accounting. We acknowledge our responsibility for the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control relevant to the preparation and fair presentation of a financial statement that is free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. We acknowledge our responsibility for the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control to prevent and detect fraud. Significant assumptions we used in making accounting estimates are reasonable. And it goes on. All material transactions have been recorded in the accounting records and are reflected in the financial statement. We have no knowledge of any fraud or suspected fraud that affects the entity and involves management, employees, or others where fraud could have material, could have a material effect on the financial statement. There's a lot of other wording. The county has satisfactory title to all owned assets, and there are no liens or encumbrances on such assets, nor has any asset been pledged as collateral. County has complied with all aspects of contractual agreements that would have a material effect on a financial statement in the event of non-compliance. And that's what it's titled, Management Representation Letter?
It goes in with audit to the state.
I'm overly approve. Sign in, whatever we do.
Yes, I.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Not all of the papers are. Have you had time, Don, to read over their suggestions or their comments?
Yes, he talked to me about most of them. I did go down and, um. Did you guys get the one where they suggested that like the, the registered deeds closed account?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I was wondering about. I, I did not understand we had departments that had their own checking accounts, I guess, I was, that was.
We do.
I hadn't noticed that, picked that up on that.
Two departments do, uh, the registered deeds did and the district court. They are recommending that this district court maintain their separate account, because they.
Except outside funds?
Well, when they get their funds in from restitution, they pay it out right away, so they're, they're constantly issuing. Now with Tammy, what she was doing was receiving her money every, every day, I, and I don't know if she's taking the bank every day. Yeah, and then she would send to, write a check to the treasurer once a month. I did talk to Tammy and she was A-OK with that.
So does that mean that the treasurer now will be responsible for doing the deposits, or can Tammy deposit into the treasurer's account?
It just means that she will take the checks over to the treasurer's office and the treasurer will do the deposit, yeah. And, and like with us, we take our money over once a week. I told Tammy she could decide what was best for her, you know, if every day was best for her.
Yeah, I think we did, or a few years ago had some problems, and I think we did ask that all of them.
At least once.
Once a week, that, so there wouldn't be any cash over the weekends laying around, or checks laying around in the offices.
So, and I did.
That's why I was a little surprised that that, that was there, because I thought we'd taken care of that.
Yeah, no, she's always had her own separate account, and I did visit with her just a little bit and told her that it was, it was gonna come as a suggestion, and she said she was fine with it. So I don't know if you guys want to, you know, ask her to come down and visit with her.
I think, yeah, I think, and.
Do we need a motion?
Need to get it closed out and, and do it, I, I just.
Probably need a motion to close the account, huh?
Um, well, I don't, I don't think so, but it probably would be appropriate if you guys wanted to visit with her about it. I mean, she is aware and she already knows, but, so it would kind of be a redundant conversation, however. It probably would be appropriate. I can't remember what the other recommendations.
I can't either off the top, that was the one that I.
He had some journal entries, which I looked at the journal entries and it almost appeared to me like they put 911 revenues, like we still get a paper check. Partly because I refuse to give our account number for them to automatically draw out their payment. So, so they basically kind of like lease, might you say, the equipment, and so they wanna come in and automatically withdraw it out of our account. I don't want them to do that. I wanna get an invoice and actually pay the bill. And so we kind of cut off our bank accounts' access to them, and so they get paper checks, so I think that's what happened there, but. I can't remember what the other recommendation was.
I can't either, Don, I.
Uh, more, having more than one staff, but.
No, that's, yeah.
Only way to do that is hire staff.
We've dealt with that every year, and there, there is no way to.
Like there's, um, they want more than one staff taking care of the deposit, with more than one staff receiving the money, it's, it's hard when you're in an office of one or two.
For your office?
Any off, or all of the offices in general, I think is what it says. That one's been on there every year.
It's just a checks and balance thing, but when you have a department, one person, you gotta hire somebody that be in there.
Just to sign cha, or to sign.
Duplicate services or?
I think we have a pretty good checks and balance between the clerk and the treasurer, and then we're also looking at the payables every year, every week, so. You know, I think we have a pretty good control over it. I guess probably the hardest one that's maybe not being checked is the receipts. But where they're all coming into the treasurer, I think that's a kind of a, a good check is that we don't have people running downtown and putting money in that we don't, don't know, and we also are trying to keep the money out of the offices, so it's all in the treasurer, I think.
Is she?
We tighten that up some.
Is Lea, is she basically watching the total account balances while you're more monitoring the fund balances? Is that?
Correct, she, because she takes care of the banking side, and we take care of the funding side. So, do you want me to ask Tammy to get on the agenda?
I think, I think we probably ought to put her on the agenda next week, just so we're clear with her that. And I, I, I'm, I was not aware of that, I just had not picked that up in previous audits.
While we're on that topic, I have a question. Um, last year for the conference, how did you pay? So like we're, okay, for example, David Doe came in and there's a card that he's going to use. Who, is that in one particular person's name, or is it, how's that labeled?
Okay, the cards are labeled Lincoln County 1, Lincoln County 2. And then Emergency Management has their own, which is Lincoln County Emergency Management. The Health Department has one, that's Lincoln County Health Department. And then I just got one for the Lincoln County Sheriff.
So who pays attention to those funds? You do?
We, yes.
And then you have to pay them, the statements every month?
Yes, we, we pay them through accounts payable. With this company, we had two choices. One, issue a generalized and, and release our liability that if our card was stolen, we can't ask them to remove any of the claims. Or we put them in individual people's names. I didn't wanna have to mess with individual names, so a, that, each of the departments that have credit cards, and I added the sheriffs because, um, they had some instances where they had to go out and their person had to pay.
They needed to buy something on the spot.
Or they had to buy gas because they had to go and take a prisoner someplace, yeah. And so it was out of their pocket, and they've been asking for a while, so while we were having an issue with one of the other cards, I just went ahead and added it. But we make them sign off on a form that says that they must bring, return the card with the receipts, and they must track, and they are responsible for any charges that are, are taken. If the card is stolen, they're supposed to notify us immediately. If they choose not to do that, they're signing that they're responsible for the charges.
Are these all in one account?
Yeah, we have one.
So there are five cards and it's one account?
What, we have one account with, it's called First Bank Card, and when we got it, it was through the Sylvan State Bank at the time. And they're with, they were the only credit card company that we could find that would like extend this credit. So.
Who's it now?
It's First.
Through Bendington?
Well, it's still called, it's through the First Bank Card is who it's through, but they're the ones that facilitated the application process, so. And it's one massive account where allotted, I wanna say $10,000, and then I have to allocate the $10,000 across the cards.
So let's say if you, if you receive a bill for the month and all five cards have random charges on them, are you pulling from separate funds to pay that bill?
They send us, yes, they send us a separate credit card for each, or a credit, separate statement for each card that we have. Then we balance, so if.
So you know that you can pull from the Health Department's funds $396.32? You can pull that, when you write your overall check for the whole thing, you know which fund to deduct from according to each card usage?
Yes, so like the department, yeah. The department will bring us the invoice and then they'll say they used their credit card on it, and then we code it in. And a lot of times we're prepaying the credit cards and very rarely have a balance, um, just the balance occurs as they're processing the payments.
Well, as long as we're not accruing interest, I don't see a problem with making the payments every month.
That we ever have.
Yeah.
Aren't there's a limit on those, don't we have a limit on those cards?
So card one has a $3,500 limit, card two has a $1,500 limit. So we kind of have to figure out what people are buying in order to tell them which card to get, yeah. Uh, the Health Department, Emergency. Those two cards, yes, so they have to get them from me. Uh, the Emergency Management and Health Department each have a $1,000 balance, and the sheriffs permanently put $1,500 on. So then they could all seize it for hotels.
I just wondered how that worked, when they were, when I was calling about, staying at the conference, they were assuming that it would be in a person, in an individual person's name, because I said, well, it's not my name, so it's under Lincoln County.
Resolution for the solid waste disposal management.
And that is the Doug McKinney, that multiple county management plan that North Central Regional Planning Commission takes care of.
So what are we agreeing to?
That, or that our plan is update. It's like a regular. I don't think it's annual, but it might be bi-annual that they send to the state.
Continuing to have local solid waste collected and transported, all the while encouraging reduction and recycling of solid waste in similar fashions that they have, as they have in the prior year. We agreed to accept the North Central Kansas Solid Waste Management Committee report, which contains very few changes, it says. Did they send us a report?
I think they sent it to Carrie, and he looked it over. I wanna say the only thing that he had maybe asked was to increase the tonage on construction demolition that was reported.
So is this coordinating the charges for each of these counties? Cloud, Elsworth, Jewel, Lincoln, Mitchell and Republic?
No.
Just, I think you're required to belong to a waste contact or some thing like that. And they do it as a regional. Everyone doesn't have to have their own.
I'm overly approve resolution. 1819.
I'll second. I'll listen for everything. Do the files, like stuff?
Um, yes.
Are you ready to do that?
Are you guys ready to do that?
Well, I think we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it.
I think it's agreeable, because the district court is going to manage their own, correct? Or are we paying for?
I told her if she was expecting Kelly General to pay for it, then she needed to get on the agenda and come and ask you guys, and she hasn't done that yet, so I'm assuming that she thinks she has enough funds within her budget.
I thought she said.
Yeah, I, I thought they were gonna take care of that, and, and then we also discussed with the county attorney that we would provide this particular set, and then whatever she needed for her small office, she was gonna manipulate as far as what we already have, and maybe some, a few other things that she can find, but I think that, that's fair.
The only question I guess would be, um, if, if it's okay, we'll sign off on them. I don't know if I have Jennifer's, but I could give her.
I still don't understand the wish though, because that freight, if there's a separate freight charge on each of our orders, I don't understand why that can't be consolidated.
Okay, that, he added the, when you order off the GSAs, you can add different mechanisms. His bid already includes the freight in it, and, um, but on the GSAs, they don't. All they do is include the actual cost, that government service.
Gonna get shipped to.
Contract. They only, so that top part is the price that he received.
To receive the materials.
Well, yes, if he was gonna contract out and do this GSA pricing, this is what the GSA says he can charge. This is additional things that you can charge, but it's based upon your company and what you charge, but this is the equipment itself. So he was trying to show you a comparison of.
What is the purpose of that? Because they're saying that because he's, because he is doing a bid for a government entity, that they're giving him a a foundational bid to work off of?
No, the GSA pricing is only for you guys to, to see that his equipment, his pricing is comparable.
Is comparable.
Because I don't have another, I don't have another business to go to, to be able to get a competitive bid. So we were just kind of trying to show you, because if we went to another business that contracted in the state of Kansas, but there are none, we'd have to go, I want to say that they said the next place was Missouri has a, a person. But then you're gonna have shipping charges additional on top of that or traveling charges for them to kind of put it together. So I asked him to include that so that way you.
There's, okay, I understand what you're saying now. I thought that was his individual shipping charge to bring all the materials here and I thought, why wouldn't he put them on the same truck?
No.
Okay.
No.
Do you want a motion to approve all these in one shot or do you want to do them all separately or how do you want to do it?
Well, you could do the county attorneys in one and then I guess, or if you decide what you want for the potential human resource office or if you just want to wait on that one. I don't know what you guys want to do on that.
How much was the difference between the, the one where he could use it as a, someone could use it as a backed piece toward the audit, toward the public, like entrance? So like a thousand dollars difference, wasn't it?
It was like $4,943 compared to $4,181.
Seven hundred.
I don't know if they would necessarily need a counter.
Because you figure if they're having someone come in, it's to sit down and have a conversation. It's not really to just.
They're not seeing the general public.
Waiting at the counter to ask for, yeah, we should save the money for now and.
The only thing would be is if they had a person come in to pick up applications. But even if they're coming to pick up applications, we would know why.
I would like one clarification. We, we purchased this stuff out of our capital improvement fund. It stays with the courthouse. Like no matter what happens in the future, just because we purchased it on behalf of the office of the county attorney, doesn't mean it goes anywhere with the county attorney necessarily. I mean, in my mind, that's why we amended the, the present thing.
So you want to, you want to do the clerk of the court, clerk of the court, right?
No.
Well, I think, is that county attorney?
Well, I don't.
I didn't think we had a clerk of.
Oh, we don't have one to her?
Think the clerk was just gonna pay to have them moved and capped, right?
I thought we had a, did.
Is that county attorney or is that clerk? I scribbled on the clerk, district court, but I could've, I could've.
Oh, it is district court.
I could've just been scribbling.
Yeah, district court is $3,938.
Maybe Jennifer could write some of those? Yeah, well, yeah, at some point we got it.
There's the county attorney.
With the other ones.
Hold on, I'm assuming that.
I think that's the county attorney.
I mean, don't, my concern is, doesn't the district court already own their, they purchased those? We did not.
Correct.
So then it's on them. I mean, that's their property to, to maintain.
Yeah, just the county general paid for them, so they're actually county. Because district court is county funds. So it's just a matter of if for some reason we take it out of her fund and she ends up going over, you're gonna know that she went over her budget because of the, last year she didn't go over her budget, so don't.
Well, and I thought some of our conversation about their budget is that they had left a larger gap for purchases that we were talking about. They made you computer purchases, et cetera, et cetera, but.
Well, the other problem we have is that we're going to use part of the district court's files, right? We're not moving them, some of them, right?
No, they're.
They're moving.
They're keeping all their units, but they're going to be housing them in Jennifer's office.
They're moving.
I thought they were going, were gonna move that one. Leave it there for her.
No.
They're not moving.
No, she's getting her own set. They're still using all the ones they have, but they're just dispersing them out of the jury room.
They have put sides on a couple of them.
So this is just basically to move them, right?
And cap them, cap the end.
They're, they're side pieces and stuff.
So that's the.
Six if you include that separate.
Thirty-nine hundred dollars, that's what that is?
Yes. So that includes.
Three thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars.
Do those have backs on them?
No.
So it's backing them and capping the ends?
No, that, they won't need any, it will just be the caps on the ends. So the cabinets that they have to separate. Cause you buy like an add-on and then normally they could take your cap and move it out and then.
Yeah, but they're not going together.
No, they're gonna have to make two. So my understanding was it was two, two caps.
Relocate. Times two.
Yeah. Dang, that's expensive.
Well, I'll move that we have the files for the district court move for thirty-nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars from file safe.
Paying it out of their fund.
What's that?
Well, I assume that will just charge to their fund, yeah, to the district court.
Okay.
I'll second.
Oh, you're gonna second, go ahead.
Terry's got it. He beat me to it.
You can second if you want to.
Got it?
I'll listen, favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now Jennifer's is two, the first one and then the second page. One is the desk and the other.
Is the files?
The, one is the desk and the cabinet and the other one is the, is the.
Files.
Counter. Actually, this is the desk and the counter. This is the times two unit.
Yeah, so we've got a sixty-seven hundred and eighteen and twenty-six fifty-five, right?
Yes.
Are we going to do the HR as well? Because we could bundle those together and pay them out of capital.
I think, I think, well, let's do them separate. I'd prefer to do them separate.
I think we, I think we should do it, do them separately.
I moved purchase. The bid from file safe.
Is there any further discussion?
For the courthouse, does that, do you need specifics, and for the courthouse county attorney office?
I, I'll add that. And then I'll put the total amount.
Did you second that or did I?
I moved motion.
I second.
Okay, I'll listen, favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then it's just a matter of what you guys want to do for human resources. Are you, do you want to do something? Do you want to wait?
Well, we're going to do something.
They're gonna need files.
We're gonna do something.
I mean, and eventually, I mean, a lot of files because it's per employee, so.
Regardless of who's in there.
Yeah, and we have to October first, right?
Did you say the increase was going to be what, ten percent?
At least.
I thought Jennifer said he told her twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
Yeah, I think we should just.
That's another thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think, I think we do it.
Okay, do you want?
Yes, we can always use it.
Not with the back, so the forty-one eighty-one.
We can add a back later if we need to.
And then that way they can have a counter space.
Is that one full section, like what's already upstairs? Is that a full, is that purchasing one section or two?
Uh, it would be purchasing two, so it'll look just like this and it would have a counter.
But it's not the full height.
No, uh, the, the three thousand eighty dollar one would be the full, full height and then we would have to figure out someplace to put their cabinets. So it's just a matter of, do you guys think?
Well, that gives them space to store, yeah.
I think it needs to be a cabinet to start with.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully it'll all fit in there and then they can use smaller piling systems.
Need more, we can find something, surely.
Okay. So then the forty-one eighty.
And that, that will be secure, right?
Yes, if, but they both lock.
Okay.
And then he has filing storage on both.
I think that's what we need, be sure we have something that is secure.
Yep.
I'd move the purchase for the human resource.
I'll second.
I'll listen, favor say aye.
Aye.
The only thing I see a problem with these nursing home bills is I am a little, I don't know where the other three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty dollars is. We're paying two different firms to test or to inspect or backflow. I don't, I thought they were all the same, but they're not. There's two of them, there's two of them that are three fifty and then there's this other one that's six hundred and, nine hundred and seventy-five.
That's because that's the fire alarm and this is the sprinkler.
Yeah, so this is testing the alarm.
But that one says sprinkler too, oh, right. That one says.
Says annual test inspection of the fire alarm system.
So.
I think that's.
One is a sprinkler and one's, oh, okay.
Yeah, I believe.
I see they're two different companies.
They're not though, they just have a different heading.
No, this one is, this one, the nine hundred one is a different company than those two.
I think one of those is the statement and the other one is the invoice.
Yeah, one's the statement, one's the invoice.
Okay, all right, I just couldn't.
I probably should pay more attention. I just print those out as I can.
That's all right.
Well, you already gave us.
Didn't realize one was alarm and one was.
Fine, as long as we don't pay it, boy.
So I will stop and let Michael in them.
Okay.
And then we'll come back to my. Kind of forgot Michael's on the agenda, so.
Sorry, guys.
No problem, Katie.
Okay, we're ready for you guys. We're not done with her, but we'll come back. She was actually after you.
Good morning.
Snuck around while we had time.
Understandable.
Wood box up on X-ray that we're replacing, the double steel arch is supposed to be delivered tomorrow. We're gonna swing them in, send them in place and get started finishing up that. So hopefully the roadway and everything should be open for fall harvest here. Like I mentioned last time, the OS eighty-seven, L and M is gonna try getting done this fall. Is there any way at all you guys would be willing for me to visit with L and M again and see what their price would be to drive piling over here on one oh five while they are here?
I think so.
Uh, we should be able to, if we're able to work with them, and this is your guys' decision, if we were able to mobilize them with our equipment to bring them onsite from one bridge to the other, if they so desire to have us help do that, is that something you guys would be willing to do to help with the costs and everything?
Well, they're already traveling, yeah. Do we have a bid on that for any, from anyone for any?
Yes, I have bids, uh, from previous with, you know, their mobilization from, yeah, it's probably been close to a year, I guess.
Yeah.
We had it from Huskers.
As long as it doesn't cost more than that.
Yeah, as long as they're here.
Which it shouldn't if they're not calculating all that additional travel.
Five or six miles, so.
If it'll fit into their schedule and everything else, um, we have the pre-conference this Friday in Salinas, so I was gonna try visiting with Kurt at that time, if he's available, while he's there to visit a little bit about it. If not, I'll get him on the phone here shortly and see if there's any way that we can work that in and get the cost down just a little bit.
Now, they think they'll have that bridge done before winter?
Uh, I'm guessing it's gonna go through the winter ways. I'm a hundred percent sure, their timeline yet until we get a chance to visit.
Yeah, we get a start date, we probably ought to kind of notify a couple of those people up there that use the road shelters and, and kind of give them a little heads up that it's gonna be closed.
Okay.
Who's your, who's your previous bid from for that gravel piling?
It was L and M and Husker Steel both put a bid in.
So you have one of their previous bids to go by?
Yes.
One of their, that's good.
And, you know, one oh five is one of those bridges that, you know, Bob and I are contemplating pretty hard on whether or not we're gonna leave it open during fall harvest or if we're gonna barricade it off, just because it is a three-ton bridge and I know that loads greater than three-ton also traveling. And the odds of it happening at that time are a lot greater than any other day.
It is posted though.
Yeah, oh, yes, yes.
Diesel pickup weighs three tons.
Just make sure we keep it posted.
Yes. And I'm approaching the seeding time for the line gravel pit. And the area in red is previously grassed pasture ground where we mined at. And the area in black, there's additional two point five acres that we mined on there that used to be farm ground that they were wanting to leave as grass. Do we want to just go ahead and include that in our cost of reclamation to go ahead and seed? I guess it's an additional two and a half acres. So it looks like it'll be a total of fifteen acres that we will be seeding.
I would say we.
I think so.
We got this.
Do it then.
Do we do that or do you contract that?
I contract that.
Do, do, do you get bids or?
Actually, I do. I don't know of any others even in the area. There's a local guy here from Lincoln that does that, so.
Who was it?
Levine Seating and Fencing.
Yeah, I would say if we dug it up, we do what they want with it, it was probably each of them to seed it than to try to.
Two more acres.
It was farm ground, but I guess they don't want to farm it, so. So I will include that when I have a chance to visit with Mr. Levine about that.
Otherwise, if dirt works done, we just need.
Yeah, we just need to seed it here. This should be our final week of four tens for this year. Starting next month, we'll go back to our five-day work week.
The days are getting shorter.
Yeah, they are. They sure are as cloudy, isn't it? Darker more time.
All the things I used to do in the light, I'm doing in the dark.
Yeah, sure. That's all I have for right now. Yeah, I don't have a whole lot of other, been spottin' some road rock around some places that are bad spots, new gravel we put in and kind of catch up on some of them. Like I say, to get ready for that up there and there, right now, there are half-spot gravel in some places up south of Sylvan between there and Vesper up in there, Fred and Mary's, you know, working on some of them spots over there.
Boy, pulling that from.
What, where's the gravel coming?
I think we're gonna take it out of Wolf Creek. Yeah, we thought we kind of got the crossing fixed, so he wanted in there to plant wheat and stuff, so we kind of got it fixed. Well, it's fixed, we'll go ahead and haul one out of there in case it washes out and then we can go back over to their lands and haul it out of there for the two.
Yeah, you might as well get in there and get it while we can.
Yeah.
It'll wash out again, so.
Yeah. And then, like I say, it's normal, I've been trying to get some mowing done and now caught up on the grating and everybody kind of being off doing the oil and session here, so trying to catch up on all of that now. Pretty low gaining on most of it. And that, that's, like I say, working on that pipe up there, the bridge, so that's about all we got on that.
Are you done working on Elk? Is that finished?
Big rock through there, yeah. Although they may do some more, but right now it is pretty much. So we get some time and we may go back in later on and work on a little more.
Have you guys used any more of that crushed concrete anywhere or just those first two initial spots we tried out?
We've used it on a few projects, nothing, no large projects.
Say I saw a loader up there here a while back.
Yeah.
Well, I got a note from when I had asked you guys to try it out, um, I don't even know what, I don't know what road that is right now. It's not Elk, is it? On this, on this far end by coming up to six, well, six, I guess that would be, where was that? By the Highland Dam, but then down to the south there. I think it was, let's see, maybe it was.
Probably cold drive on that dirt road going back to the east.
Yeah, maybe it was Colt. Yeah, maybe it was Colt. But I got a, I got a note about that and they said it's been working well, so if you have more wash outs like that, I mean, it seems to at least put down a base on dirt. I know we're not using it for gravel topping, but we paid a lot of money for it. We should at least put it to use.
Yeah, we kinda been trying to use that mainly for places like that, bad mud holes and stuff.
Right. So, um, when I was out there looking at the Highland Dam, there's, on some of those rock ledges, there's an awful lot of, what do I wanna say, large rock that really doesn't need to be on the road and is just getting scraped back and forth by the loaders. And here we are purchasing brand-new loaders. What do you, what do you suggest? I mean, why, why have we not collected that or moved it or crushed it or?
Well, it just, rock, it comes out every, the rain washes all the fines out and then when they blade it, well, they keep getting more big rock and stuff. And so, kinda holding off on that, talking about the dam, wherever you're gonna close the road or what, one thing or another, so.
It'll say, what do you, what do you have intentions on doing with it? It's, it's on either side of the road and it's being bladed back and forth and back and, I mean, we're talking some rocks this big, you know, all in this area that should either be hauled away or done something with. I mean, there's enough-
If we're gonna fix that and we're trying to run the roller or stuff or break it up and put it back in the road and stuff.
Well, there's a pretty good base on that road 'cause it's all a rock ledge coming up from the dam. I mean, that all is its own rock bed. But the stuff that has popped out and been rolling around, it's not good for the equipment, I know that much.
Yeah, that's one of those old off-roades that, like I say, is, don't get, and they're all tension-
Do you have a collection of that anywhere that you've been, that you've ever, no?
No, we just put it right back in the road. We don't haul it off, we use it. And that's, we have a whole bunch of them or something like that. Put somebody in a horse hold or something right along that road.
Ma, do you think we also need to talk about the Highland Dam, what, what our intentions are because the inspection is next year?
It got pushed back an additional year due to the classification.
Twenty twenty?
Classification change.
Twenty twenty?
I believe that's what it is.
Okay.
Additional year back. It went from a Class A to a Class B.
Because?
I think it's, I, the way I understand it, the number of residents that will be affected, I don't know if some of the residents that were once affected no longer have somebody living in them. If that is the case-
Or like maybe proximity to, I know some of those houses are empty that are closer to it. But I was led to believe, uh, by the landowner, that some of his original paperwork says that it was even, uh, a potential that the wash would breach clear Sylvan. At the city.
You know, I, I'm not an engineer when it comes to those hydraulics. Um, maybe when it was brand-new and it stored a lot of water, that that could be a possibility. As of right now, I don't believe that-
Well, it's got to be silted and white a bit. I mean, I never saw it, obviously, in its day, but just-
Yeah, me neither.
Yeah.
Just the stories I've heard of people skiing and stuff like that, there's not a chance you're ever gonna be able to do that today.
Right. Well, then I guess we still have a year, but it should at least be something we look at in the near future. Because if there is work that needs to be done, it'll have to be either contracted or scheduled in somehow.
Yes.
And the bigger the trees get, the more work it is, so.
I agree. And with the outlet tube, you know, if it starts getting some flows through it, it's just gonna cause our problem to be more work when it hits here, but. You know, some of that stuff with the state, I don't know if I totally agree with, uh, as far as wave action and placing rip rap along the whole face of the dam. They don't even do that when they build new dams now that I'm aware of. Maybe they do, but, you know, it wasn't in the original design.
Well, it's not very active. I mean, that's kind of the thing, but-
It, it, that there would come as a pretty large expense to the county if we had to face that whole face of the dam.
Are they saying it won't pass inspection if we don't do that?
I believe it's recommended maintenance. I-
But maybe you wouldn't get away with doing something as simple as replacing that outlet pipe as a first initial, like, to get it, to keep it.
Potentially.
Well, the big discrepancy to me is what, what we weren't told from the state when you guys did your inquiry and what supposedly the state told the landowner is that if that dam is to be deemed unfit, someone is going to be responsible for breaking it down. Because if it's not going to exist and pass inspection, then it needs to be put back to its original landscape. And that, whether we're in, I mean, we're definitely involved because we have property lines through there. So it's a huge undertaking, which seems to be more of a massive expense to do that, to break the dam down, than it would be to dig up that pipe and fix this face of the face-
Except at the one-time expense. It's not a year after year after year expense.
Are you talking about the, the expense of the inspection?
Inspections and maintenance, yeah.
Well, yeah, but you're talking hundreds of thousands versus a couple thousand.
They'll be main, they'll be mainson on it forever.
I mean, a thousand dollars for a hundred years versus a hundred thousand dollars a year. I mean-
Potential. You know, I, I don't know what they're gonna require it to look like when, you know, they'd have to come engineer it and shoot some shots, you know? It might be just as simple as leveling the dam and pushing it to the north to fit the contour, you know?
Well, and like I said, I'm just going by what was told to me that was, because the landowner had been in contact with the state. So what the state told you and what the state told him are not exactly the same things, but this was in two different time periods as well, 'cause all of his paperwork is ten, fifteen years old, so.
But I also think it was the fact that if our road isn't there, it's not our problem.
Correct.
So if the road's closed, it's not our problem. It wasn't our dam to start with.
That's true, but we definitely participated in the making of it.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, we did. She brought in the pictures, remember?
There's a little bit of cost share in the county, moved-
Equipment, we brought manpower.
Very little amount of dirt in the gist of it, I believe, is the way I understand it.
Well, I just think that-
But it wasn't a county project. It was in-kind that the landowners requested to the county and at the time the county did do stuff like that for people.
They used to pull out combines, they used to pull out tractors that were stuck, they used to all kinds of-
Police drive and drive was, you know, there's a lot of things that used to get done that are no longer allowed.
Well, to clarify, I'm not in favor of incurring additional expenses to the county. However, we don't know what the potential value of the dam is in the future because storm cycles, I mean, a lot of people say it's much drier now than it's been decades ago and, and vice versa. And before that, it may have even been drier, so we don't know what its potential value is to keep it. And I don't think that that should just be dumped on the landowner since it's one landowner and there's a discrepancy there as to what even needs to be done to keep it, I mean, you know, maintained. And there are several other landowners that, you know, pass through there for access, so. I just, I can see that we would have a lawsuit on our hands, I'm sure. Which may be more expensive than just taking care of it.
Okay. Nothing else?
I don't believe so. Well, you all have a wonderful week.
You too.
Thank you.
Yesterday, it was a rainy podcast. This morning, I see five days of raining.
Yeah, got it on Friday afternoon. Showing a little bit tomorrow about the time we're supposed to have the train in, so.
Ah, okay. Well, I was gonna call you last night.
Not a lightning or anything.
I got, doing something else. Play it, and I thought, hell, maybe I'll stop today or call it or not.
Yeah.
Would you like to speak to Elisa if she's here today? What do you wanna do about that? Because we are to Elisa. I mean, we are going to have to-
If she's here, I don't know if she's here.
I'll go find out. But we're gonna have to find a situation that's suitable for moving the emergency management office.
Don, do you have more?
I have two.
Put your stuff with us, I guess we need to-
I have so much, I guess.
We're gonna need a short exact.
Um, yes, it's-
Alexis is gonna go check to see if we can please-
If we what?
At least I was here.
Oh, okay.
Locator?
No, she's not in today, sorry. Totally forgot, I did two things, I was gone and I forgot what person was. She's not here today. Could we ask to put her on the agenda for next week? Okay.
Do you have more projects after?
Uh, yes, before we get into that, the one thing I was thinking also, we could, if we wanted, okay, if we're gonna put two people together, one of which is Elisa who needs her own space with a closed door sometimes. If we don't disturb this hallway piece, um, I was also thinking Economic Development could move into the cross office. You could basically switch their offices. Leave that front corner piece in the southeast for David. Put Economic Development in that office over there, which is slightly smaller than hers now, but that allows two separate rooms with a door in between on this west side for the extension office.
The, uh, two of those people aren't here full-time, are they?
For extension?
Yeah, they're just here part of the time.
Do you see what I'm saying though about having the door in between? On the, if they, if they switched hallways, there would be a door in between for them. They're already side by side now, but that door in between is just a closet.
I don't think so. Where they're not here all the time, I don't think it matters that much.
For her to have a closed-off space?
She would, yeah, she would have one available to her. I mean, couldn't this, couldn't that Elisa go over here and the girl that uses this part-time go over into other office?
I think.
Yeah, I just think that there's a, there's, there's a lot of space in there. I mean, we have these corner, what do they call this, uh, room?
I call them rotundas.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if that's what they are.
Yeah, I think that's kinda what it, but, you know, we have two people, we have one person in an office that's this big. A lot of times. I know there's some part-time help that comes in, but-
If I were there full-time, it'd be different. There are a couple days a week, I don't see.
Well, I mean, let's be honest, there are people that work in cubicles, so we have to have some kind of compromise here.
So maybe option one would be Elisa move to Ashley and Ashley move in with Marcy. Option two could be-
Kelly go across the hall. They both come across the hall. Either way, we need that front, I think that front corner room is just fairly big enough to get all of his equipment in. The only question is, do we have, is there any kind of special electrical need that would have to be adapted for that? You know, to handle his draw, whatever that is. I don't know how intense that is, but.
Sure.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. Well, while we're on that subject, here's the bids that we had gotten for the electrical. I think the one guy is from Ellesworth and the other guy is, the other is Precision Electric.
What did they come up with that needs done?
I'll let you read, 'cause I'm not really sure.
Install one CAT five data jack in the new driver's license area, which would be the southeast corner, from existing rack. Also includes one extra CAT five between rack and driver's license area for the future. Wire only, four hundred and eighty dollars. That's Precision. How do you say that? Schoit? Schoit?
Coy.
Coyts? Coyts out of Salina. Run conduit from panel in basement through basement up through four H room, ceiling into floor and commissioner's office. Change over wire mold on east wall, run wire mold up wall and install two duplex receipts on their own breaker. Run CAT six down from server room through basement into four H room through ceiling up into commissioner's office. Run wire mold up north wall and install blocks with two data ports. One thousand seventy-eight dollars. But these aren't the, the same work description. So they're not doing the same, these bids aren't for the same work, though?
I miss, I-
The difference is you have one that knows the building, knows what he can do without doing all that other stuff and the other one.
So Precision was basically data only and they felt like the electrical was good enough.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna assume Coyts was-
These were add, this was adding a new breaker for that whole room, is what I'm getting, for out of the breed of it. And CAT six and CAT five, I honestly don't know.
Those are the networking cables, so that's-
I mean, is five big enough? I'm assuming CAT six is bigger, that's why they're doing, one's CAT five, one's CAT six. I don't even know what the difference is, to be honest, but.
Unless CAT six is-
And these are adding two recept, I'm, I'm assuming that-
Two big blocks receptacle.
Is receptacle, but they just have recept or- So this is adding no electrical changes, just installing the data jacks, two of them.
So they're gonna qualify them.
Does she have any, yeah, did she say?
She didn't, but all I know is she told you guys here last time that-
She thought they're electricals?
They felt like they were, yeah, 'cause they felt like they were on different circuits each hour, it was on a different circuit.
Well, then I say we accept Precision's bid for half the price.
Oh, sir.
I move to accept bid from Precision Electrical for four hundred and eighty dollars.
Oh, still sir.
Thank you.
Oh, this is better, say hi.
Hi.
Um, this is the two letters, I'm sorry, I shouldn't make copies, but I feel like sometimes I waste paper. Those are the two annual letters for Jerry for the grant application. One is authorizing him as the authorized signer of the grant. The other one is the budgets, how much we committed funds to for their next grant cycle.
We didn't change their budget, did we?
No.
Their level that we have to maintain to get the match, correct?
Yes. I think technically we're supposed to do twenty-two thousand.
So it says the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners will ensure that twenty thousand in matching funds is made available to meet any equipment needs that should arise in the future. So, are we paying him as a county employee?
Yes, he is as a county employee. 'Cause we have a federal auditor. They used to not- 'Cause we have a federal auditor, they used to not be.
I remember you explaining that. So, but this says twenty thousand in matching funds for equipment needs. Is any of that going toward salary or pay?
Well, yes.
Does that need change?
Maybe that does.
To meet any expense?
Operating needs, maybe.
Yeah.
That was the twenty thousand.
Yes. The other one is just the sign, signing authorization, right?
Yes. Be the authorized signer. I would move to sign the letter authorizing Jerry to be the authorized signer of the documents.
Second.
All those, favor say aye.
Aye.
So I'm gonna change to meet any operational needs instead of you.
Um, yes, I think.
Um, while I go grab that, I'll let you guys, uh, this is the Recreation Board, and I apologize, I've kinda have to delay that. So that was the resignation of, of, uh.
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth. Here are the two, um, letters that I received for, yeah, anyways, that I received for people that would be like to be on the board. Uh, the three that, women that she recommended, one of them never got back with me, the other two said they weren't interested at that time, so, um, anyways, there's that, and I'll be right back.
Are there, um, do we have any regional requirements for the rec board positions? Do we have any regional requirements for the rec board seats?
They just want, want appointed or recommended by the county commissioner.
So we recommended Elizabeth Sheldon last time?
It's just an out, yeah, it's just an outlarge position. They have, like, schools and city.
So we have. Um, Stephen Weber and Jim Metz. This says, um, Stephen Weber lives in Lincoln Bridge Crew at Lincoln County Highway Department. Three boys aged ten, eight, and fourteen months. Two older boys are active in rec sports. After coaching for the rec for many years, I feel that my experience will be useful for the board. I want to be a part of not only maintaining what we have, but also building a stronger program for our children. To the Board of Lincoln County Commissioners, letter of interest to serve on the Lincoln Rec Commission. Dear Commissioners, I wish to express, express my interest in serving as the county representative on the Lincoln Recreation Commission. I have a passion for sports and youth development and wish to donate my time and knowledge to help, helping the recreation department achieve its goals for our county as a whole. I have been a supporter of our recreation department since moving back to Lincoln in two thousand fifteen as a coach and parent. I would very much look forward to the opportunity to work with our current board members and our director to creating a fun and competitive environment for our county youth that engages them to be active and participate. I grew up in Lincoln and participated in youth sports. We have never, we never had a rec department and I am so happy to see the opportunity that my kids have to play such sports as soccer, volleyball, kickball, and many of the other activities that were not available to me while growing up in Lincoln. Currently, I work as an assistant trust officer at Citizen State Bank and Trust Company in Lincoln. I am also the head junior high boys basketball coach for Lincoln Junior Senior High School. Serve on the Bud Finch Memorial Community Theater Board and the Chamber of Commerce. I would be happy to answer any questions with regard to my background of character. Thank you for your consideration as a possible recommendation to serve on the Lincoln County, Lincoln Recreation Commission, excuse me. Kind regards, Jim Metz.
I would move to recommend Jim Metz to the rec board.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those, favor say aye.
Okay. I move, we sign the letter, authorize twenty thousand county funds for use, public transportation.
For operational needs.
Second.
All those, favor say aye. Aye.
So we did buzz, there's an auditor, recognition. Okay, so I guess it's back to kind of. So I meant to grab the, grab the spreadsheet that the state sends, but basically what I did was took the state rates and after I reread that again, they were giving us what their January rates were and what their, uh, January through June rates were and what their July through August rates were.
So these are the same on both rows, but the column is each six months?
Yes. So, um, what I did was I added up all the costs and, um, so that is what the monthly cost would be, where the employees discount would land per, for the first six months, for the second six months. And, um, anything that is asterisk means that if we charge them the ten percent, it exceeds the minimum amount that the state says we must contribute, so we can't charge them any more than that based upon the contract.
Okay, so when you have the column that says employee share, whatever the total is minus the employee share is the county share.
Yes.
Which is not itemized, but that's what, how we figure our costs?
Yes. And what I did was I put that in the brown column. Um, when you get over to the side, what I did was put the average monthly costs, so I took the, the six months plus the six months, you know, and I, I divided it by two, 'cause they didn't know how you guys wanted to charge it. Do you guys wanna set a premium in January and be done all year? If that is the case, then this is the amount that we would charge the employees on the right-hand side, and then that would be what the county costs would be.
But you have the employee share going up by, is that the ten percent? Is that why?
Yeah, yes. Well, we said we would charge them the ten percent of the plan. So let's just look at the, the left-hand column is January through June. So you have the employee share and the discount and the difference between, um, the total would be what the county cost is, and I did calculate that one out.
But when they get their discount, we don't have to pay the difference in that. That's just absorbed by the company.
The company, yes, reduces the bills.
So, so we don't, I mean, I'm saying if they get their discount, that's on them.
Yes.
But our, our share is still, like, let's use the numbers then. Okay, so the employee only Plan A. The total is eight hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-nine cents, so ten percent is eighty-one fifty-nine for the employee, which leaves us to pay seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-five cents.
And that number there is.
That's the average of, because it's gonna go up by, let's see, went from eight hundred and fifteen to eight hundred and thirty-eight.
Yes.
And some change. So their share goes from eighty-one fifty-nine to eighty-three, eighty-four, and you're just averaging out for the total year what we would be paying then monthly per employee, which would be seven hundred and fifty-four or fifty-five.
Yes. I thought maybe that might be the easier way.
Yeah, that makes sense.
When I did, ran the numbers, we're off a couple of cents, but I thought that might be the easier thing is to say to employees, this is what your insurance is going to cost you next year.
So what we could do then is make the proclamation that we will just go ahead and pay that seven fifty-four or fifty-five every month of the whole year. That way theirs doesn't change. If you, do you see what I'm saying? If they can just start paying the eighty-two seventy-one in January instead of the eighty-one fifty-nine, that way they won't see an increase in June or July.
Correct. Correct.
I say that's probably the best way. That way they can count on their paycheck being the same.
Yes.
I mean, it's a few dollars, but still.
I mean, I wouldn't want you to move to say the exact dollar amount, 'cause we don't know what the exact dollar amount is, 'cause they still have options.
But just that we're gonna pay the ten percent on the average payment per month.
Yeah.
For the whole year of two thousand nineteen.
And then I figure I can give them this, this is what your insurance will cost based upon the plan, and then they can choose which plan they want to.
So question, back to when Deborah was here and made up a spreadsheet, and we calculated for the budget based on her using the highest plan at the family rate per employee, save a few that we knew weren't going to do that, just 'cause they don't have families or whatever. But do we have that in the budget now for that price? Because we didn't talk about this difference.
I barely got this together to give you.
I know, I'm sorry.
So I, I did not get set down with the budget, and, and again, with the budget, kind of depends on what plan everybody chooses.
I know.
How many vacant, how many vacant positions and how long they're vacant?
Yeah, but I can.
But let's just say, I mean, you can round off the numbers. We have twenty sixty-four, twenty sixty-four.
I don't think she did everybody as a family, though. I think she only did the vacant positions.
She did, except what they did last year, I think.
Yeah.
She told me she figured it.
So, like, I couldn't take the number in times by the.
I think the only problem we will have if we're in full employment for twelve months, and then we may be really.
How many employees we have? What's the number?
We won't have a full employment for twelve. Oh, I don't think we will.
We have seventy full-timers, and I believe there's five that do not take health insurance.
But we figure a plan for them anyway.
So you're saying sixty-five?
I, yes.
And what do we put in, one point one? Is that what we changed, one point one million? Is that what we had it set up? That would be this year's, though, right?
Uh, he has.
Oh, that's the budget, he put the budget.
One point one, aye.
Okay.
So the only thing that I could say I could do is when I do payroll this month, figure out what plan everybody has and identify it by a little check mark.
Just try to use these numbers to add it up. Did you see that J is more expensive than A in this year?
On the family plan or?
Yeah, well, the whole thing. Well, no, not the employee and spouse, but the, the employee only. I guess it's not for the family.
I don't remember what plan J was. I know two of the plans have HSAs, and so because they have HSAs, there's a certain portion of the premium that goes into the, the employee's account. But I, what I did was I added that number to the health plan, 'cause they bill us for that, so.
Could very well be what to do.
I'll double-check J to make sure I added correctly, though.
Okay, so your asterisk means that their portion was more, or wait.
Okay, the state tells us that you can only charge an employee X amount of dollars, and they said that meant, so the ones that have the asterisks, so if you read at the bottom, so let's look at Plan N, the, the ten percent of the cost is actually seventy-eight thirty-four, but the state says you cannot charge them more than sixty-one dollars and ninety cents for the.
So it's a dollar amount, not even a percentage?
Correct. It's a dollar amount. Um, it's, and it happens with the employee only and the employee child on both Plan N and Plan Q. I will say, I think we only have two employees on Plan Q, and I don't, I'm not even sure we have anybody on Plan N, so. But I just wanted you to.
Yeah, I see.
See where. And I figure this way I can also make. Once I figure out, I mean, I can tell you whether or not we're within budget, but once I figure this out, what I thought was when we sat down with employees, I, I'd like to change it up just a little bit. I have scheduled in that I would just talk to him about a half an hour, but that way employees can see, if I get the discount, it wouldn't cost me as much. If I didn't. And, and what we'd like to do is kinda help any employee that needs help getting enrolled in the plan, enrolled in the plan. Anybody that chooses not to go online and enrolled in the plan is automatically enrolled in Plan N, which is a high deductible.
But you were gonna enroll them that day, right?
Yes, if they want. If they don't want to, then we won't, but that's kinda the intentions. We will not help them with their health quest points, however, if we have time and time will let us help them. The hard thing is, is we have employees that don't have access to computers, don't have access to internet, have no desire to have access. Those are the employees that are struggling to get the discount, because I can't hold their hand and I can't do it for them.
Right.
So.
So do we wanna move on to the HR discussion?
Uh, yes, 'cause I think that's it.
I mean, I think after this, we have to get to the point where we're gonna look at what our options are for the following year, because this is kind of second stone as far as price wise. Are you presenting this to the employees on October eighth or whatever that date is?
If, if you guys are okay with the ten percent and.
Yeah.
And I, I will look and see where we are at. I just won't know any changes, 'cause oftentimes, I mean, I know a couple of employees are getting divorced, so, you know, I can kinda estimate.
I would like to say, just to put the thought out there for the future, and when we look at new plans and when we do our solicitation through broker, we may need to look at something like paying ninety percent for the employee, but then paying seventy-five percent for the family plan. You know, changing that percentage of what we pay based on what plan they choose, because if it's just employee spouse, maybe we'll pay eighty percent, and if it's employee family, maybe we'll pay seventy-five percent. And that gives us a lot more flexibility in our budget to have a different provider, you know, and I don't know what the other programs are. Let's say if you went with a group plan through Blue Cross Blue Shield that wasn't through the co-op for the county, you know, the state, the government plan. But I do think in the future that needs to be a consideration, that's a lot of how, that's how a lot of large employers do it, you know? A lot, and a lot of employers won't pay your family plan at all. They'll pay the individual portion of it, maybe at a hundred percent. Maybe we'll pay a hundred percent of the employee's portion and fifty percent if they choose a family plan. And I know that's, it, it may not be conducive to all employees across the board, but it certainly would give us the ability to raise our wages. And I think that's one of the problems that we've always, we've been talking about for two years now, is what is the competitive pay rate? You know, and if you add in what we're paying at almost eight hundred dollars a month per employee, that's quite a few dollars an hour that they're making that they're not realizing they're making, and maybe we need to pay a hundred percent of their individual insurance, but not a hundred percent or ninety percent of anyone they add on. I mean, I'm not proposing that for next year, we've already made our decision. I'm just saying, in the future, as we look through a broker, those are the kind of discussions I would like to see happen.
Well, and I could tell you, a long time ago, when I first started with the county, you only had two options. You were either single or you were a family, regardless of the quantity. And then one of the last years that we were stopped loss, where you pay the first so many dollars of everybody's claim, and I think we were up to fifteen thousand dollars, and we were suggesting the first twenty thousand of everybody's claim that we paid, they had finally broken it out into tiers where you had four options like this is. So that's a little, it, it's a little different now than what it was a long time ago, where a lot of our employees are still, from a long time ago, so we'll figure it out, though. I guess the other thing is. I guess the other thing is, is if you want to review this additional application I have and then.
I think we do.
Decide. I think that is then everything except for, did we make a full decision or are you gonna talk to Lisa first about moving?
I think we need to talk to.
Okay. If you could just ask her to be on the agenda next week.
Okay.
Then we can, I mean, you can at least do what you guys need to do on the first floor with the electrical bid being approved and then for the month of October, then maybe we'll look at moving the rest of this stuff because I know Jennifer said there's a trial in October. So she won't be doing anything that month necessarily, but then by November, if we have some things resituated and at least that third floor cleared out, and then you guys can decide when you wanna have that file save company come in. I move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing non-elected personnel to review a new application for the HR position for five minutes.
I will second.
Let me ask you this. Do you want me to go make copies first?
Oh, is there only one copy?
Yeah. Let me, let me do that before you actually go in.
We'll take a short break. I need a short break.
Are you guys ready then?
Yep, yes.
Sure, ten, is it ten? I have ten right now. But it's to get out of the city.
Okay.
But some people don't.
So we need to talk about, um, in the month meeting. When, do you wanna have it?
But Thursday afternoon works for everybody. Would you be ready Thursday afternoon?
Terry has a conflict Friday.
What's that?
Has a Friday conflict?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so he had asked whether Thursday or Friday afternoon and I, I would almost rather do Thursday just because then I can still mail out the checks on time and, and get them in the mail.
Can you make that work Thursday afternoon?
Yeah. Do you have the time in mind?
I don't.
How about two thirty?
We can, work for you.
Okay. So Thursday at two thirty. And I, I should be able to have payroll email to you. I, I don't know about payables. When I thought I was going to be by myself doing payroll and payables, I told everybody this is where we're at. This is the cutoff period and any bills are just, we either need to contact the vendors or stuff.
We've got a lot of them.
Okay.
It's just, you know.
It's just nice to be.
Yeah, I guess you're more time to go through it, kind of, yeah, seasonally question.
Yeah, I wanted to just give you guys this health insurance thing for you to have something to look at and, um, I did try to add numbers twice and double check, but I, but I did not have time to kind of add what everybody has currently.
And we're on the same page that we're just gonna pay our average monthly so that theirs doesn't change.
Yeah, if, if you guys are okay with that.
Fine.
Once I figured out that that second half was, they were saying that's what the second half of the year was gonna be, then I thought, oh, well.
It changed.
Okay, that's not so bad.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
So, okay, so I wanted to touch on the nursing home topic before we go. Um, I, has the committee met again since we were given?
Committee members are on vacation, several of them, so no, we won't meet until next week at the earliest.
Okay, so I had a few suggestions. Um, I think what we're looking at are two options and we were talking about how much utilization we can use. How much utilization we have available to go through the county hospital for whatever amount of services. Um, and then I think the other thing we need to do is we need to look at recent purchases of smaller rural nursing homes. Um, I've actually contacted a few and there, there are some companies that are buying smaller rural nursing homes. And I'm not, you know, I, I understand you've already made it clear that you don't wanna sell the building. However, these types of companies may be the ones that we're looking to contract through our board to run the facility. They have the experience, they have the history, they actually have the intact contacts and licensing, you know, facilitation through the state. One particular, uh, nursing home that sold, they got their new licensing done in about six weeks. So everything that we've been led to believe about this being an ominous process that'll never happen unless we buy out the direct license that's held now at the facility, I don't really think that's accurate. Um, I think we need to be contacting these people. I think really what we should probably do is go ahead as a commission and put together a request for proposal. And I think we can solicit current Kansas nursing home operators who have the experience and have their businesses already intact to respond to us, to see if there's that type of interest because then we can, we can appoint our new board and give them the instruction to look through, you know, the bids that we may receive, if we can put together something as far as a, a request for proposal. I think what we're offering as a county, I mean, if you look at the bills we just paid today, we bought a brand-new hot water tank. We're paying for their sprinkling system to be inspected. We're paying for their firing, fire alarm to be inspected. We're buying new sinks and new toilets and, you know. There are a lot of self-sufficient small nursing homes still existing out there. Even though they're being run by a more corporate management style setup, they're still paying their own bills, including their own property taxes and insurance, which we are also covering. So really, what we're offering is a pretty decent business package for someone to come in and run a business where we're guaranteeing a county subsidy. Now, either, I think we, we have to look at those two options. We're either gonna go through the hospital and expect them to have a lot of the, the management oversight. And I, I wrote down the top five county hospital-owned nursing homes that I think we should be contacting. Um, if you look on the, the Medicare website, it's Anderson County Hospital in Garnett, Citizens Medical Center in Colby, Coffey County Hospital in Waverly, Community Hospital in St. Mary's, and FN Houston Med Center in Winchester. And then actually, number six is Gov County that you guys already spoke to. And I think.
Actually, it was Rooks County.
Oh, it wasn't Gov? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. My mistake, so.
I would suggest that you have a visit with.
Was the one that was losing eight hundred thousand dollars a year beside on top of all the subsidies.
And Rooks that you talked to is the one that was subsidizing by like four hundred thousand, right?
No.
No, they weren't receiving any subsidy. Uh, the plane bill, nursing home was not. They, they were.
Occasionally had to pay for something.
Yeah, the county would purchase big, big items like the hot water heater, the boiler system. They would take care of like the regular plumbing bills that might occur.
Is that, is that being run by the hospital?
No.
No, that one's being run by the nonprofit organization.
Okay.
And Rooks County apparently has two nursing homes, so this is the one that is running the plane bill. I don't know what the stockton, I don't know if they ever really told us what the water stockton was, um, private or.
Okay.
County subsidy.
Gov County was run by the hospital.
Yes.
And they got something like a million five in tax dollars and still lost eight hundred and some thousand dollars.
Okay.
I don't think I got the model to be looking at.
Well, that's number six on the list as far as their ratings go by Medicare ratings. But number one on the list is Anderson County Hospital. Where is Garnet?
Garnet, where my mom's from.
Eastern Kansas.
Eastern Kansas, south of Kansas City.
South, south of Kansas City? Okay. Um, but I think if we're, if we're going to still be talking about any interconnected links between the hospital and the nursing home, you know, these hospitals are actually functioning as the administration for the nursing home. And I know we've talked about some of the discrepancies as to how you do the billing and what kind of, um, per diem you get for certain services if the hospital does have an attached long-term care unit, but obviously they're doing it somehow, so we don't quite have enough information on those. So that's the hospital option. I think the other option is if we have an appointed board, they need to be looking to contract to an operator. And, you know, that doesn't have to be a long-term thirty-year deal like it was with the worst who operated up here. But, um, there are businesses that are currently purchasing and running these small homes and making them work. And we have all the more to offer because we're subsidizing it. They, they're not gonna come in and pay their own property taxes and their own insurance as far as right now. I mean, we could be setting up a request for proposal that says for the first five years, the county guarantees to cover your property taxes, your property insurance, any and all major repairs for appliances and facility issues. Um, you know, we may have a lot of interest there. So I think that's the direction that the committee needs to be going is seeing who would be interested.
I saw another, state took over another home in Derby last week. Defaulted.
Who owned that one? Do you know?
Uh, I don't remember the name. It was called, uh, West Side or something like that. East Side or West Side or something. One of the things, they owed state four hundred and some thousand dollars in bed tax. The state tacked on another four hundred and eighty-some thousand dollar penalty. Besides that, a whole list of accounts receivable.
Well, and I think that's the other thing that the committee needs to bring to the commission. The committee needs to report to the commission, who are the actual shareholders of Lincoln Park Manor? Because we don't have a statement of shareholders. And then what debt is there as far as, like you're saying, what the state can claim as debt against the actual, um, operation? So bed tax was one that you named and there are some other things that come as a lien against the license. So those two things need to be established before we make any further decisions because we don't have either of those on record. Um, and that shouldn't be a problem for them to, to get ahold of.
Yes, I would suggest since you're doing all this research that maybe you should step in my place on, with that committee. As I really don't have the time right this time. I'm swamped for the next month with harvest and planting, so.
I will do that.
If you would like to, I would be glad to step aside and let you step in.
I will do that. Thank you. Um, I might actually try to visit with some of these people. So do I have your permission then to, if we can set up anyone to come to a meeting to discuss? I think we need a little bit more information on how this process works.
Need to work within the committee and Kelly has been acting as our point person and I think I will tell her that you're stepping in in my place because I.
Okay.
Cannot, you know, the time and you need to communicate with her because she's been setting up all the.
The meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
And doing the contact.
You don't have a tentative next meeting?
Uh, she sent out a note on some, I don't remember the dates, next week.
Okay.
She was asking people when they could meet.
Okay.
I will have her get in contact with you. When I leave the meeting, I'll go in there.
And Dawn, are we having an ad go into this week's paper? Did we decide? It didn't go last week.
You guys made the motion, but I don't have time to.
No, I understand that. I think we need to get letters of interest like we just did for the rec board and like we did for all the other boards earlier. That way we can continue with the process of, I mean, I agree with you, Mr. Wallace, we need to get the board appointed. I just don't agree with using the group that already came to us because it just, it doesn't set a good precedent for how we're going.
My only suggestion for that was that, that was some names that we had that we knew were interested. I.
I understand.
That was my only suggestion is that I knew those people were interested in.
It's their five oh one C three, it's not ours.
Yeah.
That's the, I don't know. How you're going to change that.
I think.
Well.
I think the discussion with the committee was maybe to do a separate one and spread.
Only, only because it's not, and, and I'll make this a public statement, only because it was a self-forming organization. There's nothing wrong with what they, what they want. There's nothing wrong with the people who are there. It's not the people or the group's intention. But if the commission is going to be appointing every year, I think we need to open it up to the county for public interest. And who knows? Maybe no one else will write in except for the people that are on that very same board.
There's some of those people on that board that don't want to be involved in.
Well, then there's good, there's some other.
They were helping, they were helping try to keep it open and stuff, but they didn't feel like they had the expertise to operate it still.
Which is why I think we need to look at one of two models. We need to, we need to hone in on, are we going to rely on our county-funded hospital? Because we're already allocating ten mils a year for that facility and we may need to just convert the nursing home finances into their facility for them to operate like these other areas do. Maybe all these other areas are too big and we can't compare to that model. Or do we then have this appointed board, whether or not the funding resource is a nonprofit, the board serves the administrative arm and then contracts with a licensed operator who's been in business for a while? I mean.
I don't know how many of those hospitals that you named are critical access, but I'm sure Colby's not.
Okay.
And I doubt if Anderson County is. It's a fairly good-sized hospital as I remember.
So you think being critical access is the hindering aspect of the hospital?
Absolutely, because of the way they're reimbursed.
Okay, reimbursements.
Okay, we'll adjourn until two thirty to twenty-seven. Two thirty? What's going on at two thirty?